All right, good evening, everybody. We'll call tonight's meeting to order. And thank you for coming tonight. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right, and tonight's meeting, um, let's see here, we're gonna have, um, the virtual information, we'll go ahead and read, the governor's declared a state of emergency for to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued the executive order N 3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. Public health and well-being are top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health-safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing Zoom application for the live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using questions-and-answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the questions-and-answers section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions-and-answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Please be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed, or that item has been discussed by council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. At this time, we will have Mr. Bob Fischetti, if we all can stand for the invocation, words of inspiration, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. If you don't mind, Ms. Amy Brookman, if you would lead us in that, when we meet to that point. Thank you very much.
Father, I thank you for everything that you have done, are doing, and will do for this community. Lord, I feel like there's a time when we just look to you above all other things and trust you. Lord, I pray for everybody that is concerned and nervous about the things that are changing. And God, as a community, we'd continue to stick together, continue to support one another, and continue to look for you for guidance. I pray for every decision that's made, that your hand and your mind and your will be done. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right, thank you both very much, and Amy, especially thank you, with zero notice. We now have a, well, Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything, anything to report from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
All right, very good. Any requests to modify the engendle?
The mayor?
Yes, sir.
If it's not noted on your notes, I would like for us to show the Veterans Day video prior to the proclamations this evening?
Yes, I have that going first, we're good. So the next thing, unless there's anything else, we will move on to showing a video honoring Veterans Day.
There are sons and daughters, our mothers and fathers, our grandparents, neighbors, and friends.
I arrived in, um, in Saigon at Ton Sinhut Air Base, the middle of December of 1970. It was a very, very interesting year. They didn't have a job for me, so personnel sent me over to the Office of History. They said they need a clerk, and the clerk rotated three weeks ago, so they sent me over there. And we recorded the history of everything that went on in Vietnam.
They served in a thousand different ways in places spanning the globe.
Okay, I arrived in Korea, actually 18th Fighter Bomber Wing, in January of 1953. And they assigned me to the 18th Fighter Bomber Wing in the Intelligence Operation. And, uh, when I got there, the 18th only had the F-51 fighter planes, and of course, they were propeller-driven. And they, they didn't do well against the jet, so a few days later, we got the F-86 fighter jets. Actually, they were fighter bomber jets. They were combination fighter and bomber. And, uh, part of my job was to set up the target for the pilots, usually the following day. And, uh, usually there would be, uh, targets for the bombs that they, they had there. They carried two 500-pound bombs, one under each wing.
Watching, waiting, and ready, at a moment's notice, to give what was asked of them. So now, we pause to express our gratitude and love toward those who served. Each swore a sacred oath to protect, and each bravely stood in our place around the world, all so that we could stand secure in the land of the free. Words like sacrifice, honor, commitment, integrity, bravery, and courage hardly scratch the surface of our gratitude for their service. While our words fail against the enormity of expressing our thanks for all you've done, we still raise our voices and honor you in our hearts, which are filled with the deepest kind of gratitude. To all of you, we pause to say, "Thank you for your service."
All right. Mr. George Barlow put that video together, so thank you very much, George, for that. All right, so do I have a proclamation to read? We have several honored guests here tonight? So what I'm gonna have you do is, um, I'm gonna read these things, and, um, as I read your name, if you'd be so kind as to join me up front. So this is, uh, we're gonna start with Desert Storm, which was August 2nd, 1990 through February 28th, 1991. Mr. John Thomas was a Staff Sergeant for the U.S. Air Force, FTD instructor for the SR-71 and the U-2. Welcome, sir. And I'll have Mr. John Flo, Tech Sergeant for U.S. Air Force, SR-71 Crew Chief, FTD instructor for the SR-71 and the U-2. Welcome, John. Onto the Cold War, 1947 to 1991, Mr. George Barlow, our picture-taker. He's a sergeant. George is a sergeant with the U.S. Marine Corps stationed in Yuma, Arizona. He was a part of a Harrier jet training base, and during the Beirut bombing, he was stationed at Camp Pendleton. The Vietnam War, November 1st, 1955 to April 30th, 1975, Mr. Tom Walther. Tom was a captain of the United States Air Force, OTS Distinguished Graduate, a 2018 Veteran of the Year for Assemblyman Gallagher, a VP for California Military Officers Association, and of course, a distinguished member and participant of the Beal Military Liaison Commission. Mr. Bob Fischetti. A captain of the California State Guard, prior to United States Air Force and United States Air Force Active Reserves. He's the newest veteran, he just served his final active duty day recently, and he served in Grenada. Mr. Neil Brookman, come on down, sir. He was a sergeant in the United States Army, he was Army First Infantry Division. He received a Purple Heart, a Bronze Star, and an Army Commendation Medal with V-Device, which is Valor Recipient. Big deal right there. Welcome, sir. The Korean War, June 25th, 1950 to July 27th, 1953, Carl Protit, or Potit, sorry. Very good. Staff Sergeant, United States Air Force, assigned to the 18th Fighter Bomber Wing at Osan, and another Bronze Star recipient. Welcome, sir. World War II, yes. World War. All right, I got it right, just the momentum here. World War II, September 1st, 1939 until September 2nd, 1945. Mr. William Burke. Okay, so we're gonna do that again. World War II, 1935, 1945, Mr. William Burke, right here. Mr. Burke was a Corporal, United States Air Corps, stationed in Lincoln, Nebraska. He was a flight instructor. He moved to Yuba City in 1968, and served as Yuba City Fire Chief from 1968 to 1980. So we have proclamations for each and every one of these gentlemen? Um, yeah, sure, go ahead. So they read, "Whereas the people of this nation are grateful to the veterans of our armed forces who have faithfully discharged the duties of citizenship and nobly served in times of peace and peril, and whereas among the resources from which our county, country draws its strength, we hold in high esteem the millions of living veterans of our military, and we treasure the freedom preserved for us by the sacrifice of many, while Yuba City is honored to be the home of over 4,800 veterans. And whereas Congress by an act approved June 1st, 1954, expanded the significance of November 11th by declaring a legal holiday and designating it as Veterans Day in honor of our veterans. And whereas Yuba City citizens and Americans throughout the United States live in freedom because of the contributions and sacrifices made by those who have served and those who continue to serve, and whereas these sacrifices are also made by the family members who support these men and women, who preserve the liberties that enrich both this community and the nation. And whereas Yuba City recognizes the sacrifices you have made in answering the call of our country and our city and your continued servant leadership by caring for and protecting our community. And whereas on this Veterans Day, Yuba City remembers that we are forever indebted to you and the service members who have fought and died in defense of our country. And whereas we reflect upon the enormous contributions made to our Commonwealth and country by you, we also recognize your calling to service has never ceased, and you remain committed to sustaining this legacy of unyielding patriotism." Now therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of your entire city council, be hereby recognized November 11th, 2020, as Veterans Day. For recognizing you for your service to our city, and I call this observance to the attention of all Yuba City citizens. Done today, November 3rd, 2020. Thank you very much, gentlemen. What a pleasure it is to be a part of something so special, recognizing the service to our country, to our community of these individuals. I want to thank Councilman Shaw, of course, city staff, for the work that took to gathering this information, putting this presentation together tonight. Very well done, and thank you very much. All right. So we will move on to item number three, a discussion and action of measures to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. Welcome, Brad.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Uh, due to the elections, we do not have a state update regarding COVID. However, stats will be posted tomorrow. Everything is status quo as it was two weeks ago when we met. So I just wanted to give a quick update as far as the Recreation Department. The senior center now has been open for just a little over a week. Uh, we are currently offering the programs that you see there before you. We have, on average, about 100 individuals coming through the door a day. Certainly COVID safe, and knock on wood, everyone has stayed healthy. Uh, we are gonna offer some new programs next week, and those are, as you see, probably the largest one that'll get the biggest attention from our seniors will be the Bingo. Uh, and so we will start that next Friday during the day, but we will limit it to 25 individuals just to be safe, and of course, uh, so we can distance ourselves. A little correction on the introduction to Zoom class, that's a 1 to 3 ratio of seniors. It's a computer class that we're going to educate on how to use Zoom. So I plan to sign up myself. As far as our youth programs and our recreation, again, we've been open for about a week. Uh, the two youth sports that we've been offering are PE in the parks and our soccer skills and drills. We have over 80 participants in those two programs as well, uh, and they will continue for the next two weeks. Contract classes that we are hoping to start with December, in December, in partnership with the Yuba City Racquet Club. We're in the process of signing some contracts right now. Uh, but those are what we are hoping to partner with Yuba City Racquet Club, again, starting in December. Uh, this last Friday, we had, our recreation staff did just an amazing job by putting on an event for our community. Uh, it was the Trunk or Treat, the drive-thru. We had over 450 cars attend. We had to extend it by time. Our entire city staff decorated vehicles, handed out candy. If you did not get a chance to see some pictures, there are some up there. But all of our departments participated and had a great time. And we certainly appreciated their help in this. Now, this is just what I hear, I can't confirm it or not, but, uh, I'm in the know that I think we're gonna have, uh, a mailbox here at City Hall. Uh, it's where children will be able to drop off letters to Santa between this week and December 16th. And if I understand her correctly, Santa will be personally replying to those letters as well. So, uh, more on that to come. Last commission, or excuse me, last council meeting, council directed staff to start moving towards meeting with our commissions again. So our youth commission, Parks and Rec Commission, and our senior commissions will be meeting during those days and times. And all meetings will be taking place here in the council, so that we can do it through technology, and people can participate from the outside. I'd gladly entertain any questions at this time. Thank you.
Did you have something?
I just want to ask, um, the enrollment on those courses for students, how's that looking?
I'm sorry?
The enrollment for the student programs? Do you know how many students are enrolled in?
Oh, I'm sorry, in our rec, our youth programs, uh, there are just a little over 80 or 85 or so.
Great.
In those two programs.
So, and then the contract services that we're planning on, would those begin in December or January? What are you thinking?
We're hoping to start those in December.
In December?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good job. I love it, yeah.
Public comment?
None on the computer.
All right, thank you. We will move on to item number four, appearance of interested citizens. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments by email. Insistent with public health guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available in the city council chamber and the center room. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one will be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium or from the center room. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. Do we have any comments from the public? Doesn't appear so? Anything online?
None on the computer.
Online? All right, so we'll move on to consent calendars. All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be acted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone like, from the public, like to speak on this item? Seeing none, if so, excuse me, seeing none, we'll take a motion on the consent calendar, which is basically item number five, minutes from October 6th.
I move for consent of calendar.
All right.
Second.
First and second, to approve the consent calendar, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, none, thank you very much. On to number six, business items. Change land use for a vacant parcel at 845 Louise Avenue. Looks like we have potential recusal.
That would be me. I need to recuse myself as, uh, my wife owns property close to the project.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir. All right. I forget that they don't have the same notes I do. It's all good. Welcome, Ben.
Thank you for having me. So, um, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is, um, just as presented, it's regarding, um, the future potential Stafford Way apartment. So what's proposed before you is the General Plan Amendment 20-01, a rezone, rezoning the property, an environmental assessment, and then changing that rezone in land use to a medium-high-density residential R3 land use. So here's the project setting, it's 845 Louise Avenue, um, at this northwest corner of Louise and Stafford Way. It's a 0.83 acre site. Uh, it's currently vacant, been vacant for quite a, for since the beginning of time. I'm not sure if I'm aware of many building, prior building being there. That was a gold skating rink. Wasn't that just north of it? The Calr, he's skating? No, I've been there for many years. That's right. So the proposed General Plan Amendment will change the land use designation from regional commercial to medium-high-density residential. The proposed rezone will change the zoning from general commercial C3 to multifamily R3 zoning. Staff prepared an environmental assessment, including an initial study, mitigated negative declaration, and a mitigated negative, mitigated monitoring program to evaluate the proposed changes. So before you is the General Plan Amendment map. Uh, it's showing the existing in purple there, which, um, on our land use map is a commercial, C3, regional commercial, and then we have the, um, uh, proposed change, which would go into this, uh, medium-high-density residential. And so, as you can see around it, um, there's definitely, it's, it's a mix where you have single-family R1 on the east boundary, the existing commercial, the 99 cent store on the north, the, um, the hotel to the west, and then you have the, the commercial plaza complex up in here, and then you have vacant land and industrial, um, to the south. Commercial and industrial. So the, um, the zoning, um, is tied to the, the general land use. And so you see on the left, you have the C3 zoning, and what we're proposing is to, um, change it to an R3, medium-high-density, um, R3 zoning, which is the multifamily zoning. So when we're looking at this, we're looking at consistency with the general plan and how this will tie to the area. And so the proposed residential designation would be consistent with the general plan policies. General Plan Policy 3.43 states, promote development patterns that maximize residents' accessibility to parks, open space, and shopping areas. The following implementing policies further support the project's amendment. 3.4G2, promoted balanced land use program that increases the ability of people to live and work in the city, provide a variety of housing in all neighborhoods and reserve sites where appropriate, where appropriate for housing types that ensure that the city remains an inclusive, affordable community. 3.4I7, promote infill development that maintains the scale and character of established neighborhoods, provide for concentrations of activity and mixed-use and pedestrian-oriented development in selected areas. And through those, the general plan, um, and based on the area that's around it, staff feels that the proposed GPA and rezone will further the goals and the policies of the city's general plan with respect to providing housing in an area that provides accessibility to shopping, public service, public transit, and it'd be an affordable cost. Before you appear is a, a draft proposal for what the, the potential could be when it's being rezoned. With, um, the land use density for the general plan allows up to 36 units per acre, with this being 0.83 acres, that works out to about a maximum density of 29. What, what fits right now is what's being proposed is a 24-unit complex. This is just draft, this project's not for consideration, but this is a type of project that will come in once the land use has been changed, that would be allowed. So so I got some legalities here, some legalese that I'll, I'll read through here, so bear with me with the environmental findings. And so, um, tonight, I'm requesting, with this General Plan Amendment and the rezone, the introduction of the rezone, that the city council find that the environmental assessment initial study was prepared for the project in accordance with the requirements of the SEQUID guidelines. Preparation of the environmental assessment necessitated a thorough review of the proposed project and relevant environmental issues, and considered previously-prepared environmental technical studies. While the proposed project could have potentially significant effect on the environment, the council finds that feasible mitigation measures or alternatives have been incorporated into the project in order to avoid the effects or mitigate the effects to a point where clearly no significant effect on the environment will occur. The project's specific mitigation measures include, in the project to avoid potentially significant effects are set forth in the initial study, mitigated negative declaration with the project-specific mitigation imposed, there is no substantial evidence in the record that this project may have a significant direct, indirect, or cumulative effects on the environment. Therefore, based on the environmental assessment 20-04, and the list of identified mitigation measures, council determines that the project will not have a significant impact on the environment and adopts the mitigated negative declaration for the project, as well as the associate mitigation monitoring program for the project. That's a mouthful. And so, um, and so with that, we're also looking for findings that the council finds that the public necessity, general welfare, good planning practices, public interest, and convenience warrant approval that the council finds that the public necessity, general welfare, good planning practices, public interest, and convenience warrant approval of general plan amendment twenty oh one. City council further finds that the project consistent with the general plan goals and policies and operative plan or adopted policy. Regarding the zoning, the project does not affect the implementation of the general plan with respect to surrounding properties. The proposed project is consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance to promote and protect public health, safety, peace, comfort, convenience, and general welfare. And SEQA, as discussed, the potential impacts of the proposed project have been assessed as required by SEQA as noted above. As such approval of these items will be in the best interest of the city. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and staff recommends, um, approval of A through C.
Questions from council? Nothing? Nothing going on? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing to consider the proposed general plan amendment twenty oh one, environmental assessment twenty oh four, and the introduction of an ordinance to rezone eight forty-five Louise Avenue is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on the issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Nothing visible in the room? How about online?
Nothing on the computer.
Nothing online. Okay, having seen none, here are no further. Cl- um, closing the public hearing and bringing back the matter to council, please.
Through the mayor.
Sir.
Uh, moved to approve the, uh, big, the changed land use for vacant parcel at eight forty-five Louise Avenue, recommendations B and C.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Be okay if I read the official title of the ordinance?
Yes, please.
Ordinance of the city council, the city of Uppercity, admitting zoning from general commercial C dash three, access five C, combining district zone, district to the multifamily residential R dash three zone district for approximately away eight three acres, eight forty-five Louise Avenue, assessed parcel number fifty-one one twenty-one, zero thirty-six. Thank you.
Still have no idea how he does that. Okay.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, before we take a vote, I just want to say, Ben, thank you for bringing this forward. And this is exactly the types of projects that we need to see throughout our city when we have all this vacant, uh, land sitting around. So, uh, thank you for working with the developer and bringing this forward, so.
All right, and I believe Grace second Manny's motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, none. All right. That passes, and we can bring Mr. Boom Garden back. She's doing that. Okay, now we're on the number seven, downtown business association sponsorship request.
Good evening, council members again. Brad McAtire, your community services director and DBA liaison. Uh, the item before you this evening is requesting that you review and discuss the DBA's sponsorship uh, request from the city, uh, for, uh, the twenty twenty Christmas stroll and the twenty twenty-one summer stroll. The sponsorship, uh, uh, being requested for funding is twenty-one thousand dollars for direct funding and three thousand eight hundred dollars for in-kind services, for a total of twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, at this time, I'm going to introduce our DBA president, Sandy Drown, to come up, um, and address the council.
Um, I just wanted to thank the mayor and council for your time this evening. I am, um, Sandy Drown, currently the president of the Downtown Business Association, and I also own the Happy Viking on beautiful Loomy Street. Um, so I'm speaking to this PowerPoint, and so the funds for the twenty twenty Christmas stroll and twenty-one, uh, summer stroll in the amount of twenty-four, twenty-four thousand eight hundred. Um, the funds for the twenty twenty Christmas stroll only at this time was twelve thousand, twelve thousand four hundred. And then limit the city's contribution to the seven thousand five hundred per event, um, and then okay, these are your options, right? Oh, okay, so, can I tell you which one I like you to consider? No, just kidding. So.
Let me guess.
So that one at the top, see the one I should probably re, I'll read that one over. No, I'm just kidding. Um, and then I guess those are your options, so, but I would like the first option, but anyhow, any questions you guys have in regards to, um, I know I filled out the application form. This is new, this is our second time filling out the application, and so, um, uh, I know you guys probably have already read it, but I don't know if you have any questions, but I'm open to questions at this point.
Through the mayor, thank you for being here. I'm, I'm curious as to the Christmas stroll, it looks like they just carved the twenty-four eight in half. What would act, what would it actually be for the Christmas stroll? If we wanted to go ahead and make sure we funded that in this round? Is it any different than twelve four, higher, lower?
So the Christmas stroll, what we do have that is our challenge this year is we are going to have, um, we, um, have to, security, and so that's something that we don't normally do for the Christmas stroll, is security, and so we had to hire. Usually, we only do security when, um, for the summer stroll because our beer garden. And but this year because of COVID, we, um, decided to hire security just to kind of help, uh, control. Um, typically, there's a lot of, uh, people that come down, and so we're not, um, we don't have as much vendors, but that was where a lot of it was, plus mask sanitation for, um, COVID, just to make sure that we're safe to, for the public.
I guess what I, what I'm concerned about is if, is twelve four enough for the Christmas stroll? Given what you, you just shared with us.
Um, Crystal, you might help me with that, because I've So to answer back to your question, um.
You, can you go up?
Budget, yeah, budget girl needs to go to the budget girl podium. I'd be interested, Crystal, what are specifically because of COVID, the additional costs?
Um, we have extra security, um.
So security is going to be enforcing what?
Um, we, what we've done in the past, just as we, when we did our, our downtown marketplace, we hire extra security because we have them actually walking the street, and so we, if we have congregated people, we actually ask them to separate because of, due to COVID, we don't want the, we don't want large gatherings. So we hire them to come in, and generally in the past, due to the marketplace, we only had a two-hour, two-to-three-hour event. This is, this is all day long. This is going to be like from eleven o'clock till ten o'clock at night. Yes, we do have the, the stroll that ends at eight, but the people and the vendors are not off the street by then. So it's going to be from eleven o'clock till ten o'clock at night. So that is going to be the additional security. We have water stations that we have to have set up, we have additional toilets, we have set up additional sanitation from the toilet company that is going to be set up as well. So those are additional costs that have already come in.
Are they limiting, are you, you're trying to limit the capacity at all?
Well, we're limiting the vendors that are coming in, so the capacity, I really have no, no take on that, but we have already, I've already sent out all the application and the stipulations for, um, taking our vendors. I'm only doing every other spot to limit that, that ten, that ten feet in between it, um, to limit the capacity of how many vendors we bring in.
Are you expecting more people, or do you know, any idea?
I have no idea.
No idea.
Yeah, I can't, I can't gauge that.
But yeah, we're bringing in additional restrooms.
Yes, be, just because of the fact that people, uh, we do have to keep that line separated. We can't have people congregating at, at a bathroom. You know, we can't have twenty people waiting in line for a bathroom, or twenty people waiting in line to wash their hands when they're eating. We have to have that separation. I even have to have more tables and such because of that fact, I can't have them sitting and congregating, waiting for the food, or waiting to go to the bathroom.
Thank you.
Back through the mayor, um, you're making an assumption, which I'm, I'm hope is correct, and I mean that I hope it's correct too, is that we'll be able to, to have a Christmas stroll. What's the contingency? I mean, how much are you going to forward pay if all of a sudden we move into another tier? And, and Dr. Lou or Public Health or what have you, or the state even says, I'm sorry, no more, no more events, I guess.
Um, so we did in our application for that, because a lot of the times we have, um, vendors that we have to prepay for, usually six months in advance. So we did have, um, we added into it that if there is something like COVID that happens again, where the state is requiring, or county is requiring for us to, um, uh, to not have this event, that we would get our refund back. So we did put that in the application this year.
So I, I guess I'm going to go back to my original. I support the Christmas stroll. I, I certainly want to see it happen. I'm just concerned that the twelve four, based upon what you've just relayed to us, that may be enough, but it may not be enough, correct? I, it just looks like it got cut in half here in the staff's recommendation, and I, I don't know what the real, I don't know what the real number is for you.
So typically, so if you go back to the application, let me just go back to the application mark, um. So if you go back to the application, what we typically, the seventy-five hundred is the cash, the monetary donation that you guys give to us. And that's what always previously, um, we do have an in-kind that is for, um, public works. The number that, um, that really is, um, hard to gauge for us is, um, police. And that is not an in-kind, that is where we have to pay, we get invoiced for it. I do know we've worked with Sergeant Slade, um, and so Crystal and I have worked with him for the last three years, and we've been able to, with the working with him, is to, is, is to help with the charges. So like getting people quicker off the street, so that, you know, when they clock off, they clock off and our voices, our, um, invoices less. But, um, they still have staffing stuff, so like typically thirty-eight hundred dollars is per stroll is what we are charged, so. And we've noticed since we've taken over the last three years, it was about twenty-five hundred, and now it's about thirty-five. And I know with Sergeant Slade, he's talked about staffing issues, overtime, which is stuff that, um, uh, we, you know, unfortunately, um, it just is what it is.
So I, final question for me for now anyway, then, are, are your, is your ask twelve four, and you'll, you'll walk away happy?
Um.
Well, don't look at the top number right now, just like the Christmas stroll.
Um, so our ask, just for the Christmas stroll, um, our ask, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's more of a timing issue, just so you guys know. We're in the summer of twenty twenty-one, we're kind of living here and now when it comes to numbers. That's why. But, uh, anyway, go ahead. Jer, Grace, you look like you have a question?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I, I, yeah, that's what I was trying to get at, is that our finances, we really don't know exactly. I mean, we're looking, that we have a surplus, but we also have a future that we really don't know financially where our city's going to be standing, but um, I just want to make sure that if, if the the stroll hap, which I adore, it's one of the best, um, community, I think, one of the best community events.
That voted best, yeah.
Yeah, it really draws from all over the community. So you, both of you ladies and the team and our city staff have done a tremendous job on this stroll. Um, I hope that it, it happens, um, and I'm glad that you have measures in place in case something changes and that you're prepared for that. Um, I, I'm along with the vice mayor and the mayor, I think, is that we, if, if we want this to be successful for you to be able to, you know, two, twelve thousand four hundred would cover those major expenses, because I wasn't sure, Crystal, because you said, yeah, well, we've had seventy-five hundred, but with these additional costs of sanitation stations, uh, probably having some additional materials, uh, you know, if people don't have masks or stuff, you probably have some of those on hand, I'm guessing, right? Um, so twelve thousand four hundred would be a good number to, to get this done.
I think so.
You feel good about that? And so that's not in addition, and I'm just going to get this clarified, in addition to the thirty-eight hundred in-kind, or is, or would, you know, or would we pick up, add that thirty-eight hundred into the twelve hun- uh, twelve thousand four hundred?
I think the thirty-eight's included in the twelve four, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. I really want to say it's not, but I saw the look, even with masks on, I could tell.
I, I, I saw that in there, but I was trying to make
It's included.
It is included in the twenty-four thousand, but I was maybe suggesting that the in-kind, that we could, anyway, it's, it's a wash.
And it is a little confusing, just so you guys know, um, the in-kind typically has never been in that twenty-four, it's always been the twenty-one, and then we've, and so now it is, and so that's for Crystal and I.
Because you pay for that anyhow, anyway. It comes out of your overall total. So that's what I'm saying, that if, so in reality, maybe you're asking of us is that twelve thousand four hundred plus the three thousand eight hundred, which is
No.
I know you're not, but it, wouldn't it be great?
It would be great. We would love that. We would love that.
That's, I mean, wouldn't it be great that we provide that? I'm just offering
No.
if you're able to, because you're taking it out of your own budget at the end of the day. And you're doing a tremendous, um, tourism, attraction for families, a safe location. Um, and, um, and this year, I think if, if people are going to have a really hard time, a distraction like that that is safe and well put together in a partnership, and if we pitched in, the city pitched in, um, you know, fifteen thousand instead of twelve thousand, um, that might not be a bad, um, investment in my point of view.
Excuse me, Mayor. So the twelve thousand four hundred includes ten thousand five hundred in direct funding and nineteen hundred in in-kind services. And so I just want to clarify that that's the, um, understanding, because the nineteen hundred dollars pays for, the in-kind is for public works to shut down the street, that's not for PD. As, um, they mentioned, PD gets paid directly, and so I just want to make sure that we're all clear in terms of that that's the recommendation.
Through the mayor.
Sorry, thank you, Dan.
I just want to clarify that fifteen thousand would be okay for, for my part.
Okay, uh, through the mayor, uh, thank you, guys, and I just want to say thank you for thinking outside of the box, because I know you guys have put a heck a lot of work into figuring out how to, um, do this and do it in a safe manner. And, uh, as far as do we need it, does it need to go forward, you better believe it. From the time that this stuff started, we said we have to look after not only the physical health, but the economic and the mental health of our community. And I can tell you, people are starving for something that's near normal. Uh, and this will be a huge shot for that. And back to the clarification, yes, it, the in-kind was the public works. Thank you, Ms. Langley, for bringing that up, because
Yeah, and sorry about the ask issues on that. We're used to the whole, like, the both strolls, so you guys broke it up and kind of threw us off.
Yeah, and this goes back to what we found out as we were going through last year, that, that had kind of just fallen through the wayside, and we've got to make sure that we're accounting for it properly, so. Um, back to the overall budget, and I know, uh, Sandy, we had a brief conversation about this and, and working with you guys is, you know, usually with the strolls, that adds to what you can do as the Downtown Business Association, others, uh, other projects. Uh, this year, we're all in a very unique situation. We know that any profit margin is going to be less. We know that we're really trying to do the things we're doing for the overall well-being of our community and get us down the road further. Now, um, as you said earlier, twelve four is what you're looking for now. I think that's a, a good, uh, a good, you know, a guess as far as where we, you know, are at. And at the same time, we're like you with our budget at the city. Uh, we've had the reporting out through the close of the fiscal year nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty, and then, uh, we're, we haven't even got the results yet for the first quarter of twenty twenty-one. So, um, I, I think that we need to go with what your recommendation is, the twelve four, including that in-kind is part of that. Um, and hopefully we will be in a much better position economically, city-wise, financially, everything as we get into the summer. And we can look at that, but I do think we need to be prudent with our finances as well, because we've got a lot of unknowns. But, uh, I think twelve four is a good investment for our community's mental health. So I would, I, I think that's where we need to go.
Thank you. Manny?
Hoping we have it. We're going to have it, correct, girls?
We're doing all we can. We just had that, uh, trick or treat, uh, trick or treat the street, and that was a, a really great event.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, thank you for, uh, counsel that showed up and helped with the crosswalks.
It was very good. Thank you for that. Did you have something else, sir?
Nope, I'm ready.
All right, oh, you're good? All right. Any public comment on the item? Nothing in the room? Anything online?
Um, there is one comment from Tony Kurlin. Um, shouldn't the DBA, um, submit an itemized list of all projected expenses before the council approves any expenditures? Seems to be rather vague. Seems to be rather vague at this point. Um, led the stroll, but.
Yeah. The, uh, application is public record and there's, it's laid out pretty well in there.
And just to add, um, we do an annual report. The DBA does an annual report to the city. Um, we're going to be doing that in the next couple of weeks. So we will have our budget included in that with it being anonymized.
Okay, thank you. So no further public comment. We entertain a motion from council, please.
To the Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to do, uh, council's recommendation of funding the 2020 Christmas stroll for $12,400.
Second.
First and second to approve $12,400 to the DBA for the Christmas stroll. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
I don't have 15, but okay.
You're still an aye?
Still an aye with.
Still an aye, all right. So we have a unanimous approval. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Move on to number eight, Council Chambers, Public Meeting Access, presented by Diana Langley.
Good evening. So as we all know, in March, the governor issued a state of emergency, which basically, um, shut down business as we know it, including having the council meetings, uh, open to the public. Um, and so fortunately, the numbers improved. So beginning in, with the September 1st meeting, we opened the council chambers back up to the public and, um, gave the ability for the public to provide comments in person at the meetings. At the last council meeting, Vice Mayor Boom Garden requested to agendize this item to discuss options to provide even more seating availability for the public to participate in meetings. And then Councilman Shaw also requested to discuss the commissions as well. And, uh, Brad addressed three of the commissions tonight in terms of noting that their next meetings will be in person at the, in the council chambers. The last couple of Economic Development Commission meetings have been in person with the option for people to participate virtually if necessary. Planning Commission meetings, for the most part, have been in person as well with, um, the ability for the public to participate. Although there were, there were a couple of conflicts in regard to utilizing the chambers. And so those meetings were held virtually. But the intent is that those are held in public with the ability for the public to participate. So, uh, per council's direction, we have options available for you tonight to, for consideration. One would be for staff to participate remotely in the council meetings. That would then open up additional chairs in the chambers for the public. Um, another option would be when we have, uh, agendas, when, which we expect a lot of public participation or, um, just in general, move the council meetings to an alternate larger location to allow for more seating. Another option which do not recommend would be to not follow social distancing guidelines and allow the council chambers to be filled to maximum capacity. Um, we have noted that when, um, we signed basically, actually when council adopted a resolution to accept the CARES Act funds, we also stated we would comply with federal and state requirements. So, um, that would be an issue if we were to not follow the guidelines and would potentially put that funding at risk. And then finally, um, provide more public awareness that in-person attendance at meetings is allowed. It's currently noted on the beginning of the council agenda. Granted, it's in small print and it's strongly encouraging people to participate virtually, but it does give them the option that they would like to participate in person. They can come to the council chambers. And so if council's direction were such, we could make that more prevalent in letting the public know that they have the ability to attend the meetings in person if they feel comfortable doing so. So with that, um, you requesting council discuss the options and provide direction to staff.
Thank you, Diana. Anybody have anything to prove? Go ahead, sir.
Through the Mayor. Uh, thank you for bringing forth the options and, uh, the discussion. I'm, uh, encouraged by the fact that, that, uh, we have the opportunity like we did tonight to entertain the public in, in the chambers and, and return to whatever , uh, normal is going to be. Um, specifically, I have a couple of things that, uh, I just want to bring forward. Number one is, uh, irregardless of what options we choose, uh, I'm strongly advocating that we continue, um, for as long as we can technically, technology wise, is to continue to zoom the meetings so that folks who, uh, want to participate and can't do so in person have that option. I think that's been, uh, a good, um, uh, byproduct of, of the COVID situation is learning how to do things a little better for public inclusion. Number two is, uh, as it relates to staff, I think that, uh, you know, if we get to a situation, and obviously if I look around here right now, I've, I've got a few department heads and some other, um, valued staff in the room. But if, if there was public that needed those seats, then I think respectfully ask for the staff, uh, consider moving to their own offices or to another location and zoom in. Uh, if they had a, uh, presentation, uh, I would, I would appreciate them being able to come in person and do that and then go back to the office to watch the rest of the meeting. Um, I do have a request and this is, goes back to my time as a department head. And that is, um, for certain reasons, I would, I would hope that we could include a law enforcement presence here, uh, at every meeting. Um, we've had a couple of instances where there's been some weirdness out there. It's nice and comforting to see the chief or his designee in the audience should, should something like that. Uh, hopefully it never does, but it's nice to have them here. Um, and then finally, uh, item five on the staff report in regards to, you know, really outreach to the public to let them know that this, uh, this city's council chambers is open for business. And we encourage the public to attend, uh, and, and participate in our meetings because, uh, that's what we're here for, is for public participation and, and to represent them. Thank you.
Good comments. I'm not going to repeat it. Like, I, I completely agree. Number three, not an option for me. Here I am, starting to repeat it. So I'm not going to, go ahead. Anything else? All right.
I, I, I just want to support what Vice Mayor.
Yeah, it's all reasonable.
Yeah, it's all reasonable. And I do agree that we have, um, presence of, you know, law enforcement here.
Yeah.
And make accommodations and we can, we've all, I, I think all of us have always encouraged our community to be here. So we're trying to find ways to make it happen. So.
You know, I, I, I'm not even opposed to continuing the virtual option even after COVID.
No, I think it's.
And that's fine.
It's, it's looking forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all good.
Do you have an additional?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I came from a time where it was discouraged that department heads attend the city council meetings. And that was by a previous city manager, certainly not by our interim city manager. Uh, and I as one, uh, value the fact that, uh, if something comes up in one of our departments, um, the subject matter expert or, or their designee is in the room so that we can talk to them. So, uh, if you don't mind relaying that back to the, to the department heads, I have an interest. I don't know if the rest of the council feels that way, but I encourage and welcome the fact that department heads are here. I, I think it's a, it's a good, it's a good move.
Yeah. And if they're not able to be here presently, they can call in or zoom or what have you, but, um, or have a representative or altern, you know, someone. But, um, it does help us, um, I think, make better decisions when we have some questions that come up in the middle of the meetings. Good idea.
Through the Mayor. Um, yeah. And whatever we decide for us as a council, uh, I think to make it simple, it just passes on down to all of the commissions and such that we have because they should be following the example that, that we set. Uh, I've made this comment before. We call this the council chambers, but ultimately this is the people's chambers. It's not ours. Uh, we're just entrusted with it for right now. So we do need to be as inclusive as we can. And the other comment that I've made over time is, since this started, we learned we have to start standing up our city and go to the people. So absolutely, we need to embrace technology. Ever how that's going to work, I see technology being a part of us forever going forward so that we can go to the, to the people. I remember, uh, first coming to this area, you know, 30 years, 30 plus years ago, uh, used to be able to watch the council meetings on the local TV channel. They was, you know, it was broadcast on, I think it was Channel 5 back then or whatever it was. Um, now we've got technology, it goes out over the internet worldwide and we need to make sure that we keep that incorporated as part. Um, people can come in, we're all adults, um, you know, they can figure out families setting by themselves. I do not want staff policing, uh, because that, in the environment we've been, I do not want to put any of our staff, uh, at risk because, uh, there's been, you know, altercations during the last six months for people saying, you're not wearing a mask, you're not doing this. We don't need that. So we just ask people to be very respectful, uh, respect the chambers, uh, come be a part. And, uh, let's lead by example. The only thing that I would add, as you talked about the fine print and it's kind of in the thing, someone please call the Appeal Democrat because they still list our meeting as virtual and not in person. And I've had several people telling me, why don't you tell us? And that's where they're getting their information. So if we can make sure they know that they have both options, I think that will, that will help.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Very good. Um, just, uh, basically just a general discussion. Manny, do you have anything? All right. Do we happen to have any public comment on the item?
None. That's up here.
All right. Have you received the, uh, information you would, are you happy?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Am I happy?
As long as you received.
Regarding what topic?
More information than you didn't have before you walked up there. We've done our job. That's good.
All right. Thank you.
All right. All right. So let's see here. Where are my eye right here? Um, so we'll go to future agenda items. Anybody have anything for that? Not at this point. We'll go on to reports and communications, beginning with Councilmember Cardoza, hopefully with a, uh, air for brevity. Hopefully.
So like two pages of teaser. Uh, okay. Um, I'm gonna start off with meetings, uh, on this occasion. We, we had a very minimal, two, couple of weeks. Uh, attended the Yuba Center Homeless Consortium meeting. A lot of great things are happening in our twin cities. And it's going to only be getting better as life goes on. Uh, attended the Sutter Community Affordable Housing. We have a lot of, uh, affordable housing being built, uh, on the other side of the river. And hopefully it's going to be on this side of the river here very soon. Also, I attended the Economic Development Commission meeting with, uh, um, the Mayor, uh, was very enlightening. And they're moving forward. Uh, I attended the annual, uh, unmet transit needs hearing, uh, at SECOG. It was, uh, virtual, but, uh, uh, something to learn. Uh, folks, they have till the end of January, if they want things done with our, uh, transit authority that they need to put the requests in. I know at the meeting, there's a lot of folks in Plumas Lake that want bus services out there. And that was a big issue at the meeting, but there's, all requests are accepted. Uh, please turn them in. That way, uh, our transit authority, after the first year, we, and get the funding, we'll be able to help our community on both sides of the river also. Chamber events, uh, this Friday morning, we, uh, had a virtual business connection breakfast. Uh, Yuba, Yuba Water Agency was the host of it. Learned quite a bit about the agency. They're doing great things. And they're, and expecting to do more here in the future also. Community and city events, uh, I helped, uh, our Yuba City Police Office Association. We, uh, cooked dinner for Saylove Saturday. We served 150 people lunch. It's a great turnout. They cleaned up the river bottoms after the fire they had. Uh, went to another Golden Valley Auto Body Car Show. We're up over a hundred cars now. Friday nights are getting big on Sutter Street. Uh, they got a food truck and it's quite the turnout. Everybody has a great time. Uh, the DBA, uh, Councilmember Shaw and Vice Mayor and myself, we were crossing guard attendance for the trick or treat, had a great time. Then our mayor, uh, passed out the, uh, best costume contest. So we had a great time that night. And then also I attended the drive-through trunk or treat here at City Hall with, uh, Vice Mayor. Like you said, we passed out over hu, uh, candy over a hundred, uh, 450 cars. We're thinking most, almost 500. Uh, we had traffic backed up to Highway 20 and 99, but it was a great turnout. Hopefully we'll be able to do that again next year. And that's it for me. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, I'll, um, I'm going to do this speedy like, um, Shannon does. So I think the only thing that I want, the, um, had a lot of conversations with our board of supervisors on the Baymont, um, hotel. And that got passed apparently. Um, and, um, with the work that we've done through the council and the homeless, um, ad hoc committee, uh, hopefully within the last two years, um, gentlemen, we have been able to, plus with the Baymont, not including that, um, about a hundred units of affordable housing, um, within the last, I would say about a year and a half, two years. That includes New Haven. So that's part of the work that this council has, um, done in the last year and a half. Um, the other thing is that, um, I think it's really, really important, um, for us to continue. I, I'm, I'm encouraged to hear, um, my colleagues talk about how we want to, um, uh, do things in, in this new normacy. But I also respect the fact that each of you are really good at listening and, um, taking input and hearing out when we're talking about, um, the health of this community. So I, I want to say that publicly because I don't think, um, a lot of folks get that one-on-one that I get to see. And, um, I want to thank you for that because we have a long journey ahead of us on rebuilding our economy and we're on that track. Um, I really, I, I am so honored that we, um, recognize the veterans tonight. And, um, Councilman Shaw, I know that you've had a big impact on that. That's, um, part of your passion, your commitment. And seeing the video and, um, one of the gentlemen that was honored tonight was my, um, stepdad. He was a, a technical sergeant and he served in the Vietnam. So I, I, watching that video was just tremendous work. And I know, uh, George Barlow has worked really hard on the videos and the banners and the banners have had our challenges, but just know, community, that we, we want to honor our veterans and that's what we're trying to do. Um, the trunk, trunk and treat, um, thank you, our city staff for putting that together. That was amazing. And for those who attended, I heard about it, um, in my shopping and, um, one, I heard, I heard positive and things that you don't, you know, and, and, and when you're out and about in the community, we get to hear a little bit of everything, as you know. So, um, really well done. And hopefully, hopefully we can do more of it, um, in the future. Um, lastly, I'm going to leave, uh, the conversation so we can get to the elections of, uh, a couple of gentlemen that I wish you the best in your election tonight, Councilman Cardoza and Mayor Harris. So really wish you two the best. I know it's a hard journey and both of you probably been ti, tired of this, um, campaign trail, but, um, it's tonight. So hopefully we'll see you again next week or two.
Week or two, fine. Two months, we'll see.
I think both of you will be back. Um, I might, that's my hope. Um, and with the aspect of voting today, um, I, I think that thinking about, um, President Lyndon Johnson, the Voting Acts, right? An important, uh, 50, uh, 55 years ago. And the gals, um, did a, a walk today for voting for women. And so all those things are really important. So all I want to say is to the community that voting is important. It's one of the things that you can do, just like everything else. And I'm really encouraged to see anyone and everyone out there voting who can. And I end with, um, Congressman John Lewis, who is no longer with us. He said that when people tell me nothing has changed, I say, come and walk in my shoes and I will show you change. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Sir. Mr. Mayor, um, last couple of weeks, I've seen a lot of subcommittee work, um, been encouraged by what's going on with the Bog Stewart Master Tax Exchange Agreement. Uh, hopefully that will, uh, be reaching an endpoint here in the very near, near future, uh, as well as the, uh, working with the subcommittee on the, uh, uh, city manager recruitment, budget committee, all of that stuff's been moving forward. So more details to come in the future. Uh, I will keep it very brief, but I want to go back to, uh, tonight. Um, uh, Veterans Day, as you said, Councilwoman, is, is very, very near and dear to me. Tonight, I wear not my Yuba City pin, but I wear my American flag and Air Force flag because I served in the Air Force. And below it is Army Aviation Wings. And I wear that for my father. Um, I wear that for, um, a lot of friends. I grew up near a army base and, um, see what these men and women go through. And, um, these men and women here tonight, we went all the way back to World War II. And with that, um, there's a lot of people that, uh, we talked to through this process that, uh, I think it carries a lot of, of bad memories from what they actually went through because not everyone is willing to stand up and be recognized as a veteran just because of the things they saw, the things they had to do. Um, but it's because of them that, uh, we have our freedoms that we do. And, uh, while there was only eight here tonight. And, uh, while there was only eight here tonight, there's over forty-eight hundred in our community. And, uh, it's a community. And if you've ever been around veterans, um, veterans will take care of veterans. Setting in restaurants, you'll see a veteran with a Vietnam hat or something on, or Desert Storm hat. Having lunch, they'll buy that person lunch and never say a word, just as a thank you. So, and, uh, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we have one more person in this auditorium here tonight that served, and I think I'm looking at her. Ooh, oh, wait, Rob's back here. Chief, would you stand, please? Anybody else that served? Judy, did you serve? Okay, please stand. Um, I just would like for us to give you guys a round of applause because you guys are just as honorable as the eight that we had before us tonight. And as I call each and every veteran I know, you guys are our hidden heroes. You walk amongst us every day, and none of us know, I'm gonna say this bluntly, what hell you endured when you served to protect our freedoms. So join me tonight, please. With that, uh, I too wish my colleagues the best of luck. Uh, kick butt, take names. I look forward to serving, uh, more years with both of you. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'm not gonna pretend to be brief like the others.
Oh, man.
I'll do my best. Uh, first, I wanna, uh, thank Councilman Shaw for, uh, his efforts in, in recognizing all the veterans. Um, truth be told, Chief Burke, uh, who was here tonight with us, ninety-seven years old, fire chief here in Yuba City, uh, I quite probably would not be here as he is the guy that hired me as a firefighter way back in the day. So thank you, Councilman Shaw, for all that you have done towards the veterans. I want to, uh, acknowledge, um, that, uh, I was invited by Mark Mulliner, uh, the business manager of Local Two Two Eight, to go take a look at their training center in Marysville. There, you know, he's a huge advocate of vocational training. It, the, the facility, if you get a chance to go see it, is really top-notch, and it's gonna be good for our workforce, and, and it's a regional, uh, deal. What's, the, uh, on the upside, that's great. On the, on the not-so-good side was, uh, he relayed a story that he really wanted to relocate that to, here in Yuba City, but it was not, was not met in a business-friendly, uh, way. And so I hope, you know, as a council, we continue to make, um, business attention and retention and attraction, uh, one of our, one of our goals. Uh, like Councilman Shaw mentioned, uh, the Master Tax Exchange Agreement, actually, I think, is very close to the finish line. We'll be bringing it back to council for approval. I'm sure you will, you will be happy with the product. Um, keep our fingers crossed. Um, it was mentioned, the trunk or treat, um, to Councilwoman Esmondola's, um, mention about a community event on Pluma Street. There, it was a lot of, a lot of people down there. The street was alive, and I had gone down earlier, about a week or so before that, and Pluma Street was jumping with the haunted house and everything else. And so things, things can be, uh, really good down there, but, you know, we need to throw a little of our, our, uh, support down there as well. Councilman Shaw mentioned the city manager process. I think it's fair to say that, uh, that we have a, an applicant pool of over a hundred. Um, and, yeah, a quick look at those, we're a pretty talented group, so that process will continue to move forward. And, uh, a couple of other things is we have commissions openings right now. Planning Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, and Economic Development Commission openings. So if you're out there in the public and you're interested in serving, uh, take a look on the, on the website or come down to City Hall. And like everyone else, I certainly wish the best to, uh, my friend and colleague Manny Cardoza and my friend and colleague Sean Harris tonight. Uh, I know you've put forth the effort. I know that you come to the meetings, uh, and, and, and participate and do the work. So I, um, I wish you the best. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much for all that support. We'll see how it goes. Um, I, I run the risk, of course, reiterating since I have to go last, but thank you so much again for recognizing our spearhead in the effort to recognize our local veterans. I learned something over almost five thousand here locally. I didn't realize it was, uh, that many, so that's pretty awesome and, and a proud moment for our city, I think, to recognize them and our two individuals right here. Uh, uh, it's just really awesome. Of course, my son, as you guys all know, is stationed in, um, where is he now? Texas. And, uh, just got from Alaska, back from Alaska, heading off to Qatar here for six months, doing his thing. And, you know, so I, I'm not living that. I'm not, I'm not him and not his family, but I am his father. And so I have my, my, my son and my grand, my grandchildren, thousands, you know, a few hundred miles away. And so I can only imagine what the sacrifice is when you're living that. And, um, you all did that, and so did everybody else. And so we really appreciate that and for the, uh, the grander purpose of, of our country. And then one of the part of the reasons of that is being able, the ability to vote. And, um, I couldn't agree more, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Esmondola. Um, the more the merrier. I think it's embarrassing. We don't have a hundred percent every time, to be honest with you. However, um, it's my understanding that we already have record turnout, and, um, I think that's great. Um, it's, it's, uh, an honor to be a part of the process, no matter, you know, whether just voting or if your name's on the ballot. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I'm, I'm proud to be a part of it. As far as meetings, uh, most of mine are in the beginning of the month. So this latter, last two weeks, we ever, we had a whole heck of a lot, but I did, one of the notable things that I have the honor of participating in was a, uh, a brief tour of the city accompanied by, uh, ah, Ben Moody, a lady named Julie Young from Urban Elements, her own private company. And she gave us some really good insight and some encouragement and some outside-the-box thinking and some options to consider regarding, uh, economic development specifically related to housing, um, here in Yuba City. Of course, we're gonna overlay that with, uh, the improvement, anticipated improvements with, uh, Bridge Streets and a few other things. She wanted, I was happy to hear her. We, we wanted to bombard her with all the potential things that we kinda saw. But she said, whoop, I'll come back. I just wanna do small bites. Well, that was encouraging that she wanted, she was interested, and she, uh, she, uh, saw the Yuba City that we were envisioning, and she was really excited with what she saw and the potential, uh, that we have here in our town to give folks some housing options and some, and, and of course, that would result in some economic development and helping some folks out. So there's more to follow, more to come on that. But, um, I really enjoyed that time, and thank you, Ben, for, um, for, uh, being a part of that and your, uh, anticipated participation later. Um, and that really was the main thing. Like I said, everything was either, um, it's either in the beginning of the month or, um, I had a few things on a personal level that conflicted, that I wasn't able to participate in some, um, meetings, but, um, it all worked out in the end. So that being said, I'll, I will cut it short. I, I thank you all for your, for your work that you do all the time. You step up, um, Master Tax Exchange Agreement, our subcommittee on the, uh, city manager budget. Uh, the list goes on and on, homelessness. Um, we all come together and we do the, the job. We step up, we work together. We have a wonderful city staff, um, that supports us all the time, and, um, so very appreciative. So, thank you all for that. And, um, that being said, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you all very much.